Welcome to the Regular City Council Meeting, Tuesday, April 16th. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Smack.
Here.
Clements.
Here.
Dewater.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Weir.
May I have a motion to approve the April 16th, 2024 Agenda, please?
So moved.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five on our agenda tonight is public discussion. If you wish to address the council and the mayor, please come up to the podium. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, Lynette Locke, 1814 Sixth Street. And I have a couple of things I want to talk about. First is to the mayor and the council, a suggestion to help public feel like they're being heard and their wishes are being made as well. Do you think you could possibly offer them a chance to speak on motions before you accept them? To give everybody a chance to speak. And that way, everyone has a chance to be heard and then maybe everybody will be more civil. Instead of you see people getting upset, very agitated. It might just help everybody all the way around. Second thing I would like to speak about quickly is the whole burn ban. Everyone has strong emotions regarding it. As I see it, our community isn't being told the truth about what is, what people want done and what you guys are looking at doing. When I went out for signatures, they were telling me whoever had been there previously to get signatures were telling them a whole different story. And it's like, wait a minute. Where, where are these stories coming from? We need honesty out there and we need it to be published out there. So everybody knows that we're being honest, that there's just not rumors going around or made up stuff. Because a lot of these people signed for the other one and said, what? Wait a minute, it's, you can't take our leaf burning away from us. You can't do this. Well, I mean, they're being told. One is, oh, it's just for garbage. A city, somebody from the city, I'm not going to mention who it was, was, oh, it was only regards to wet leaves. Wait a minute. Who, where did this all come from? Someone within your city? I was told by a couple of different people, some very not nice things on Facebook, which I don't really care. But the fact is, they didn't, they weren't speaking clearly, but they were representing our city. That's not cool. I mean, they're not, they might be residents, but they actually work for the city. Taxpayers pay their wages. So. And I looked up regarding the burning. I couldn't find the ordinance online and I didn't have time to come up here. But I found in a 2012 spring newsletter where it told us what we could burn and what we couldn't burn. The one thing you couldn't burn was tree sumps. Well, I get that, I understand it, but in garbage, you know, the normal, common sense things that you don't do. And it's, it stated it flat out. If we follow those rules and we enforce them, fine, so be it. I had to close my windows last night because someone was burning something that wasn't so nice. Well, you know, it shouldn't have been, it should have been caught by an officer that was, should have been driving through, but nobody did. I didn't, I'm not going to call. It's, it's an inconvenience for a couple hours. Big deal to me. I'm not going to raise a big stink about it. And several people I went to have COPD where they're on oxygen 24/7. And when I told them about, they're talking about burning the, banning this, they're like, they can't. Because, you know.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Hi, Steve.
My name is Steve Siebel. I live at 413 Evans Road. I was looking over the bills this month and this is taken positively, proactively. I noticed we're putting an engine in a squad car. When I was on the council in the past year, the thing I felt strongly about is safety with the police department having the right equipment at the right time. My question is, I brought this up when I was on the council, to look at a, look at a progress report. If a car starts costing us so much money, then maybe it's time to get rid of that car sooner than later, instead of just keep milking it and milking it and milking it. And I believe this car that's getting an engine has had a lot of other repairs. I didn't do a full research on that car for the last year, year and a half. But it's something I want the council to be aware and the citizens, that it is our tax money that's paying for this and doing this over and over and over on the same vehicles. We did do a pickup last year and from what I've heard from the police, they, they're content with a pickup for a squad car. I think it's going to work out in many ways different than the SUVs. And I'm just asking the council that you work for us to look at that going forward and see if that would be a venue that maybe we need to swap out another squad car and get something else different or better, so we're not spending all this money on repairs. It was a tremendous amount of money when I was on the council, tires, this, water pumps, radiators, front ends. It's just something I want you all to look at and be conscientious of our money when spending goes on in the future. Okay?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Jerry, 213 Heather. I'm not going to talk about the fire ban because I know how it's going to work. But anyway, I'm going to talk about this other thing. Mayor and you guys talking about putting all this money all in one, on Lafayette Road and out to Landon? That ain't right. The money goes on this road, goes on this road. That ain't got nothing to do with that out there. I mean, I look at it this way, you guys taking money from here, taking it out there, and that ain't right. That's why, that's why you guys ain't doing this road this, this year because you, you guys screwing it all up. That ain't the way that happens. When you get a loan from, you know, that money goes for this road because this road been backed up several years for not getting it done. Well, you need to put the money separate. That way you know how much money goes on this end and that. Because if you put it together, who knows? You guys going to take that money and put it out there like, like the mayor said, I'm booking all for that out there and not up here. So I'm just telling this right now, this, this ain't right. You got to do it, you got to do it, you got to do it the right way or the wrong way, and the wrong way is wrong.
Where's out there? What, what are you talking about, out there?
You guys.
You referring to Eagles Landing?
Yep. Them guys, both of them told me separate, that all that money's together. It can't be all together because you got to, you got to split it somehow. You're going to take money from here to pay Paul. Well, you can't do that. You got to, you got to have it separate for the, this road, and this road here should be done before that. Sure, I know you guys want this done, but this road's got to be done too. And it ain't getting done. Because you guys don't want to do this. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Happens to the best of us.
Happens too soon, though. Shane Hennecker, 422 Brookside Avenue. I have a house next door to me that I talked to a while, a couple of years ago. This guy took out a, a building permit on his house six years ago. It's never, never been finished. He put the outside of the house up. There's no sheetrock, no electricity, nothing on the inside of the house. He broke the sewer pipe going out under the street, so they got to tear the street up to fix it. He's got a trailer sitting in the front yard, wash machine and stuff back. It's just a, it's an eyesore. It's a problem for me. I just dumped 30 grand in my house and upgrades and I got this thing next door. I've come to talk to the mayor, I've talked to several, the, the many different people trying to get something done about it. It comes back that I'm being mean. I'm not being mean. I just think we all need to live by the same rulebook, you know? Nobody wants to have that kind of eyesore next door. Let alone now I got a raccoon problem. Let me tell you, raccoons are no fun. They have no sense of humor. My wife thinks it's funny watching me fight with this raccoon, but it's not.
And our code enforcement officer has been in touch with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just making sure that we have it up to Steve.
Yep.
Jerry Locke, 1814 Sixth Street. My thing is on the burn ban that you guys trying to do or whatever you want to do with it. Thing of it is, yeah, we got to get it, what you guys are going to do. Because the last meeting that I was here on, I mean, I heard all kinds of stuff. I heard neighbors arguing about neighbors on the backyards. It's almost like the old show with the, what is it, the Hayfields and the McCoys back in the day. Okay? So, that's what I'm coming up with. Everybody's got to learn to try to get along. Can't, you can't, just don't talk to them. I mean, it's pretty simple. But I also heard of an ember going up there on your roof and starting the house on fire. Well, if you're going to go with an ember, an ember is anything. An ember is somebody's corn burner, fireplace, barbecue grill, a pellet stove grill, a charcoal grill, a cigarette. I mean, it's where you want to go with an ember. So.
Fireworks.
That's what I mean is, we heard so much last time of the, of every different little thing. Well, what is it? What is it actually going to be? I mean, what are you trying to ban? Are you trying to ban burning wet leaves? Trying to burn the grass, the wet grass? What? Or is it actually an ember? So, I mean, we got to figure out what we're, what we're going to try to ban here because it ain't fair to say we're trying to burn or ban leaves when, you know, half of my neighborhood or my whole neighborhood where I live at, up in Kingsbury Heights, it's, it's all leaves. It's all trees. And then some of the people don't have trucks, like I said the last time. You know, I do help my neighbors out. You can ask a lot of them. Oh, whether it's plowing snow or it's picking up leaves. But the thing of it is, there ain't enough of me going around. You know, and unfortunately, you know, our society kind of made it that way. That a lot of the old school people are still here like me, but then you get the, the new school people, you know, they're likely to just go get a job. So, I mean, it's hard because they don't want to help the neighbors. So, I mean, if, if people got a problem with their neighbors, I mean, try to get it figured out. I mean, and, and there you go again, is if they were doing something wrong, there you go again. Call the cops. Call the fire department. Call the code enforcement. Call somebody because there's a rule for that. And if the, and if somebody else is doing the bad thing, then call them. I mean, that's what we got them here for. They're supposed to keep the peace for us. So, I don't know. We just got to get this thing figured out in a, in an easy way. I mean, there's no easy way because you guys are all going to be put on a, on a table to figure this thing out. But I just want to make it sure it's right. So, it's, 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 not everybody's going to benefit from one thing or the other, I understand that. We can't be, the town's going to get divided if we go one way and we're going to get divided the other way. But to me, it sounds like it's just the old school book, like I said before, is the two neighbors fighting again. So.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Looks like all of you guys have spoken, so we'll go on to our next agenda item and that will, you know, we are doing surveys, just so you know, kind of in response. A newsletter will go out probably within the next week or so that gets mailed out to every resident and it'll have the survey in there for the people that don't have social media or people can't go to our website. We want to hear from them as well. So, we're, you know, we're working behind the scenes and, you know, I think everybody that's sitting at this council right now is fair and takes all of it into consideration. So, number six on our agenda tonight is approval of the consent agenda.
Move passage of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven, approval of the resolution calendar, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smack.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
Dewater.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
And Weir.
Yes.
Number eight is a public hearing regarding our FY 25 budget. We will open the hearing at this time. If you would like to comment in regards to our budget, our proposed budget for FY 25, please come up to the podium.
Steve Siebel, 413 Evans Road. I think you've done a real good job, on one hand, of keeping the levy rate per thousand at what it was last year. So I congratulate the mayor for working the numbers, city council for going along with that. What we have to take in effect there also is the assessed values went up in this community and I think it was 12 or 15 million dollars in growth, which is great. But that also leads property tax revenue coming in of 200, 300,000 extra from last year, which is great. But my concern is that money's all been fluxed into the new budget to make the numbers come out at the levy rate. And I don't understand it 100%, but I think I'm pretty right at what I'm saying. And I'm just asking, we need to be dollar conscientious in this community. Nothing against raises that went on. I hope that we have that in check to where we're not double paying annually like we did in the last year. They all were deserving of money, but I just want people to be aware, and you should be if you're sitting on the council, to look at the revenue streams and looking at what the numbers come out, to that there's a reason why that levy rate stayed the same. It's not just because we really, we worked our best last year trying to control expenses and I think everybody that was on the council did a good job. I'm just asking you that work for us, that we pay you, to keep a real close eye on that kind of stuff going forward, so we can have another prosperous year next year on levy rates with even excess revenue coming in, that maybe we could do something with that excess revenue. And what that leads me to is I heard through the budget that the fire department wants to have, well, they're getting $65,000 in their budget and there's a grant being applied for a vehicle. I'm not opposed to that, but I think we need to be looking at, I heard for years on the council, that the fire department, ambulance, fire truck was outdated, can't get it serviced, can't get it serviced, can't get it certified. I would like to know from the council, are we enacting something to have that kind of funding out there to grow yearly? So when we come up or whoever's on the council, we have a fund to work on rather than going, oh, where are we going to get that? We got a bond for it? What are we going to do? And I think that's something we need to take a real good look at and I wish we would have done it this year with the excess money that we had in assessed values and put some of that towards that because I think it's, would be a positive thing for the city and it'd be less tax dollars having to be spent in the long run. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions, concerns?
Any information that we can give Mr. Siebel on that, that I know you and I have worked on quite a bit the last several months?
As far as.
Savings for those rainy day funds.
Oh, yeah. And we did, actually, last year, we did put 70,000 back for, well, one of the things that, you know, within the next three years, it takes about three years to build, and that's an ambulance. So, that is something that, that will be a priority moving forward. And it's not necessarily in this budget, but we had it from last year. And then next year, we'll set money aside and we will be doing that. Yes, we will.
Could you, could you let me know what line item that 70,000 is in then? Or is it just in?
It's, it's in the general fund. Yep.
And in part, was it cap, not capital improvements, it was, there was a project list or something that we had to have dedicated so that that money was allocated versus just, well, right now, we say it's for an ambulance, but tomorrow it'll be for something else.
Right.
We specifically wanted to earmark it so that we knew that's what it was there for. And if we had something else come up, we can't touch that. That was made for that, that item, so.
Yep. Absolutely. Any other questions? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Go to item number nine, Resolution 6824, approving the FY 2025 budget.
Move passage of Resolution 6824 to approve the proposed fiscal year 25 budget.
Second. Roll call, please.
Smack.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
Dewater.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Weir.
Yes.
Number 10, 6825, Resolution 6825, approving amendment to development agreement with I-380 Properties, Lot 1, Eagles Landing. Mr. Jim Benda and Jason Huff are here with us tonight. If counsel would have any questions regarding this extension to the development agreement.
Sitting in front of us, mayor, I know you and I had a chance to talk today. The items taken back from Bolton Mink have, these been presented to Mr. Benda and Huff?
They were, it was Tyler, they were returned to Tyler.
Yeah.
So those are some questions that they had.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So just in, in my discussion with the mayor again earlier today, just kind of reviewing this, a lot of the same questions in this email were ones that I had as well. Obviously, just the proposed size for the property and the changes. The, the green space, just again, we, we spent a lot of time previous years, council, to come up with that kind of design beautification standard. There were a lot of those key pieces in here that, again, while certainly not wanting to deter business, but we put it in for one company, Quickstar, and Peterbilt are having to follow it, we want to make sure it kind of settles in the same. The other piece of his concern was really then, some of the items put in here for access back to the other two lots and then also just simply traffic flow. So, obviously, there's the current proposed plan and again, I know it's rough, but like the loading docks they show in concept, three loading docks there. If the semi traffic can't get in and turn around, a lot of that, that's going to back it up onto our roadway. And the one thing that I, I at least feel could be a problem is semis then staged out onto the roadway and would potentially deter other businesses or upset other motorists or anything of trying to get in and out of there for other properties. So again, just making sure the little pieces as they work through these questions, that that was one of the pieces that I had brought up. Again, just speculation, I don't know because they're still working on the plans, but those were just high level ideas that I had seen right away.
Was this where the strip center was going to go?
Yes. Yep. It's in our place, yep.
And that was one lot and they're going to get all of this on one lot?
Well, actually, they have it, you know, actually, they have it broken down to three. This is going to be, the lot is what, three acres?
Three and a half.
Yeah, it's three and a half. It's three and a half acres. So, this is going to go on one section and they were still going to keep the other two lots for, you know, some type of retail restaurant or what have you.
And that's this?
Yeah. And that, well, and Dick, you saw the email that I sent to you with the site plan on it, right?
I can see the back of that.
I'm not sure that I did.
Yeah, it's that right there.
So there's about two acres for this building.
Okay, two acres.
Acre and a half between the other two lots.
Okay.
The concern I had was with the proposed layout that we were given showing the loading docks on the front side of the building. To me, that is not an attractive place to have loading docks.
Sorry.
So is this a spec building?
No, this is a developer that wants to build there.
I'd like to ask the council, I was involved when this started in the beginning. Steve Siebel, 413 Evans Road. What's going on out there? Originally, when we, they were one of the first lots that were contracted on to buy. Was this Lot 1 and 2 or am I confused?
This is Lot 1, yep.
Okay. Why are we having so many amendments and delays and pushbacks? And I know in the past you had said attorneys back and forth, back and forth. Now you're wanting to amend it again for another project and back it up the date again?
It actually, we're just, they were supposed to break ground in May.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yep.
Well, weren't they supposed to break ground last year?
What's that?
I'm sorry, weren't they supposed to break ground last year?
No, May of this year.
Okay. Then what's the update on that? So the citizens know what's going on there.
The update is, they have a interested company that would like to come in, but they're still working out, they're still working out the details. So they don't, you know, they don't have an answer today.
So they won't be building in May like they were obligated to do?
They were not. But the.
What's their drop?
It would extend the project. However, the assessed value would still go in effect on January 1st like we originally planned.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Steve, the same, I had the same question this afternoon of just.
Yep.
I, I totally can understand delays. Some are avoidable, some are, you know, of our own creation. Regardless of where it was at, what it comes back to, our responsibility is the taxation that was used to obviously build the property and now that bill's going to come due. Where are we at? And that was the point blank question I asked the mayor. And it was regardless of what sits on it, we get a minimum tax assessed value of that 700,000 for that lot, January 1st, regardless of how many delays, regardless of anything. And if it sits empty, then it's a $700,000 piece of dirt. But I was, I had the same concern.
Anyone else? Counsel?
So this is saying, within six months, then they need to break ground?
Yeah. That is correct, right?
The difference in valuation in this and the strip center is significant, too.
No, no, we understand that. Yeah.
Much bigger project.
Yes, it is. Well, I'll take a motion to approve the extension of the development agreement for I-380 Properties, Lot 1, Eagles Landing.
I make that motion?
A second.
And that'll be a roll call, please.
Smack.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
Dewater.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
And Weir.
Yes.
Motion approved. Number 11, request from police chief to replace engine in 2018 Dodge Durango with advanced automotive in the amount of $9,562.54. This was already verbally approved by counsel. And yes, Mr. Siebel, we had looked into the repair bills for this and it actually gives us another three years with this vehicle, which is in the timeline that we're on track to do for every other year for replacing a vehicle because it will have a three-year warranty. What made us decide to go forward with this project instead of going another direction? So I'll take a motion for approval, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 12, council to consider the draining system for the Community Response Center. This has been an issue for several years, probably since 2008 after the really bad flood that we had that year. What we have found out since we have checked more into what was going on down there, the tiles underneath that building are either collapsed or they're, they're no longer working. So we have been checking with contractors, had a couple contractors go and give us estimates on this project and I, Dick could probably speak to it more than anyone, but he was kind of looking for approval just to move forward to open and have some discussion with the contractors that had bid it before it comes to council for final approval.
Yeah, I think the low bidder on wall sawing is just what we need. It, it's a basic drainage system. It's something we can expand on if we need to. But I don't fully understand his drawing.
The, the two rectangles and the four X's?
So, I'm usually pretty good with X's.
There's surely more to come.
So, as Dan said.
Yeah.
I wanted to meet with him and everybody's welcome to meet except the open meetings rule.
I guess for, for, for my two cents, the other drawing we got, if, if his plan is really going to do the same thing as this other beautiful drawing, which has a very laid out.
Um, which has a very laid out plan for, for those of you that can't see this nice drawing that I have. Um, it's just a way to get the water where it needs to go and then pumped out as efficiently and effectively as possible, and. I think that's the other guy's plan, but yeah, it'd be good to meet with him and.
Yeah, and huge difference in cost between the two.
What, fifteen thousand approximately?
I mean, that's fifty percent.
So I, I just, um, felt for my own, um, knowledge, I, I would like to meet with him and clarify it, and then. I, I guess I'd be prepared to see it back on the agenda in two weeks.
Yeah.
For the first May meeting.
Yep.
Uh, for approval.
If we can get all the adequate answers, I could see that.
And that's something we did budget for FY twenty-five, so.
I think it's time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we either do something or we just seal it up.
Yeah.
It's just wasted space of just problematic proportions that. I can attest on everyone that has had to mess with it, we're, we're done.
All you have to do is lay eyes on it, and it's like a no-brainer. It's horrible.
Yep. Well, when you hear that the, the firefighters and the policemen can't go down there and work out like they had, um, you know, they need to be able to do that, um, safely, so.
Yeah, and there's storage issues too.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, we've lost all of our, I know the firesides removed almost all of their storage, everything moved up, we had to get the gear out of there, we had, obviously, because sitting in wet, moldy conditions. Was destroying gear, I mean, there's no way that that was helping anything, so.
And the whole place is orange.
Yeah.
It is because of the rust in the water, the whole, it's like you painted it orange.
And this won't be the end of it, we still have to repair the walls and, and that sort of thing, and the cleanup. But this will hopefully prevent future problems.
Yes.
And I think we'd even have, you know, some help in some of the crews and stuff to repair it. The reason we're not doing it now is because it's all for nothing. Until we can resolve the water issues, it's worthless, we, we've. Cause I can tell you the first three, four, shoot, probably six times that it flooded, we were down there every time moving stuff out. And then cleaned it, mopped it, bleached it, moved it back down, repaired the drywall, repaired. And at this point, it was, cause, I mean, we do it for the city, and great, I'm not asking for kudos, but.
Right.
It was all free time, it was all free labor, it was all of us just down there doing it. And, yeah, they're all, we threw in the towel.
Yeah.
They're done.
Well, if, if it's not, if it's not, the issue's not gonna be resolved, there's no sense of.
Yep, to gamble on a dry year versus a wet year.
Yeah.
You know, and cleaning it up in between.
Absolutely. Well, I'll take a motion to continue on with this project.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirteen is counsel to consider purchase of a Dura Patcher machine from the city of Cedar Falls. Chris, if you wanna come up to the podium and talk a little bit about the process, the machine, what the benefits are?
Well, the benefits is, are that, uh, I wouldn't have to have an employee out for a month, month and a half. Putting cold patch in and then coming back in two weeks and putting cold patch in the same hole. This is like a hot slurry with some chip rock. And they've, they've had patches, we went over and looked at it Friday. They've had patches that lasted up to two years. Because it's more of a hot mix and it stays in, and then through the summers, it's kind of more pliable. But I know there is another town interested in it, and from the little bit of research that I did on it, they're anywhere between thirteen and seventeen thousand. For this particular machine.
And what, what, what are they asking?
No, used.
Used, yeah.
They're two seventy new.
They're asking fifteen, and I know traders already got approval for it, but, uh, we're first in line. It's kind of like their brine machine, their brine machine, they had a set.
We bought a brine machine from the Cedar, Cedar Falls.
Couple of years ago, yeah, to make our brine, and it was just a set price, and we came over, looked at it, and they said, you want it or don't you want it? Cause other people do, but they're just helping out smaller towns.
So, how many patches can a person do in four hours, say, or eight hours?
Well, it just depends, they could spend all day on Lafayette.
And doing it by hand, and, and where, how many can you do on this?
Well, the same, it takes two guys, you gotta pull it with the truck, and you gotta constantly, you know, you gotta go to, uh, Tama to get the slurry. We gotta go out to the quarry to get the chip rock, you know, but right now we're going to Aspro every other day for a cold patch. And it's just not staying in.
And, I mean, how much of that stuff can we fit in a load?
Uh, that I don't know.
But didn't he say, um, when we were over there that, uh, a truck full? You could do, like, yeah.
Four days, four days.
Yep. Of that crushed rock, and then he'd also talked about, uh, there was a gentleman there that actually did with their new machine. Um, did a demo for us, um, took us out to one of the streets, showed us some of the patches that had put in last year. And it was, it was just pretty amazing because you can picture what our cold patch looks like, but these are actually, um, almost like a little bit like seal coating. If you're familiar with that process where you put a layer of the emulsifier down, and then put rock, and then put that layer again. Matter of fact, we did this whole road out here, uh, ship with that process. Then Chris had reached out to him again, you know, kind of getting the bottom dollar, and, um, didn't they say fourteen?
Fourteen, yeah, they would take.
And then they would, um, you, they would let us utilize their staff for three days and train us on it.
How old is the machine?
Um, that I do not know.
No, I don't know that either.
Age of what its service life has been so far versus what it may have left?
Uh, those are all questions I can reach out to them.
So I, I think it's a good deal, I just wanna make sure, you know, if they're, they average twenty years and they had for eighteen. Type of thing, you know, we're right on the table.
No, I totally get it.
But otherwise, yeah, I, I, I know the, the struggles you guys have had with the cold patch, I've seen it. It's just one of those that. Y- your list is ever growing of things to do, if we can get something that at least provides.
We've went to a little, it's more expensive cold patch that's supposed to stay in a little longer, and it just. So we try to utilize that on Lafayette, and it just. It might stay another month, but it's just, they're popping out left and right, so.
Cause you were over on, was it Mary and Norma and stuff here just the other day?
Yeah, we've been out for three weeks.
I ran through again and already saw it, and it was heaping, but I could already see it wearing away off of one side, and I'm like, this is fresh. I was like, it hasn't been here very long.
It's ridiculous.
So.
It just depends how much you put in.
So.
Yeah, and they, I mean, they're not totally getting away from cold patch, they still do some cold patch, but. For the most part, I wanna step away from it.
Well, if we can get it to last longer, I mean, that's the big thing, cause then that frees up man hours for other things, and then hopefully just helps the holes.
Yeah.
You know, it's one thing if you gotta keep going out and fighting it over and over, it's extra man hours, but then just more risk and damage to vehicles and.
Paying for more cold patch, you know, that's not gonna last.
Right.
Is the cost of the materials similar to cold patch?
Yeah.
I mean, I can imagine it's a little more expensive.
Running to, running to Tama to get that slurry will be, but I guess they're really good to work with too, so.
Mayor, what's the maintenance on that machine, when they use it on a regular basis, does it gotta have a different name, Chris?
They, he actually went through the whole maintenance procedure with him, and the. The, um, company that they buy the slurry from, which I know is at the emulsifier, like the tar stuff. Um, they actually, uh, clean it out at the end of, end of the season for them. So they have a, a mix that they put inside there and completely cleans out the whole thing.
Yeah.
But this, um, operator, I mean, he went through like, what, a good hour? Just showing the different steps and the maintenance of it to keep it clean and, and running good and, yeah.
Yeah, and they're not just gonna let us pick it up and be on our own, I mean, they're, they are supplying staff for three days.
And it all looks modular, pretty serviceable, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just a diesel engine, and it's pretty all simple stuff, but.
Yeah. No, just, just one driving the truck and one doing the, the job. Yeah, you can actually look it up, it's on YouTube. Um, the one they have obviously is newer than this one on YouTube, but it's called Dura Patcher. And you can look up the whole process, I think the, one of the better things, and I know City of Waterloo has one. Uh, one of the better things about it, it's a high pressured, like, the hose that's coming out of it's high pressure. So you're really getting all that debris out of that hole. Without, you know, purchasing, uh, another air compressor and generator and all that kind of stuff to carry around with them, so. Um, you know, it just, just what, you know, three of us actually went out there and, and, you know, were able to get the demonstration and, you know, all about it. You know, what it does, you know, the number one thing is, when you're using cold patch, it's exactly that. You're putting, you know, you're putting cold, a cold mix into a hole. Yeah, it's a quick fix, right. There's no heating involved, this is a hundred and forty degrees, it's going down there and you're throwing rock on top of it. Yep, it's, it.
With a nozzle.
Pretty much blasting it in there and then, then laying the rock over it.
Yeah, I'm confident you've seen it, especially crossroads, it seems like Waterloo's always filling it in there, that's probably the most common, it's the nice little kind of almost. Tank style behind the truck, and they're out there with almost like a big sweeper hose, like a big round, and they're just, you see it just shooting into it. And it's the stuff you hate driving over because you hear it just take the tires all the way across your sides. But it helps also put it in the pressure then too, so not in, but then the tires, people driving over it help pack it in, so it, it.
My big question was just on whether we had the manpower, either it sounds like you got.
Yeah, same people, yep. Same too.
I remember this Cedar Falls operator saying that he actually preferred this older machine to the new one that they've got. If it was up to him, they, they'd still have the old one, cause he preferred it.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'm all for that, it lasts more than just a couple of years, you pull the hole out, cause there's an air compressor on it, and it comes out the end. And then, and as long as they get the holes cleaned out, they'll, uh, and you put the oil back in it and you mix it, it comes out mixed, but. Um, it'll stay probably anywhere from, probably, they, they were given an estimate before, was anywhere from three to seven years.
Oh, wow.
So if you do a, if you do a, it depends on the bigger holes and stuff, and then clouds can go over it, and you're gonna scratch it out.
Right.
Um, any like cold patch, put it in a day, it's gone and then. Asphalt, if you wanna fill, uh, like our, uh, the asphalt compared to that. It's actually cheaper than buying hot asphalt, uh, to do this this way, even with a couple of people doing it. Because, uh, that's how we got it figured out, is, uh, between you buy the rock, the oil, and you're trying to get in it. It's still cheaper to buy that than it is to buy, buy the asphalt, and it'll last longer, I mean, asphalt lasts a long time if you're putting it in like tooth, but. But you, you, you'd have to do grinding and stuff like that, but I think, yeah, this year's, uh, to get out a cold patch, this is a hundred percent.
We actually had two, uh, Evansdale citizens who work for the street department in Cedar Falls bring this to our attention. They knew it was gonna be coming up for sale and, and thought it would serve our, our area well.
And the other thing you can do is you can do levelers, so I mean, even if you got a little, little, now even a cobble, you just got a little even something. You can level it back a couple of feet and still make a leveler out of it, and, uh, and then you don't have to, you know, you don't have to raise up the concrete or put in these concrete. And it's, it's, uh, it's a good, I mean, once you learn how to use it, you can do a lot with it, so.
Yeah, I, I think over time it should pay for itself, um, I would make a motion to go ahead and go with it.
Excellent.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Uh, mayor and council reports, I, um, just wanna reiterate on this burn ban. You know, we're, it's not something we're gonna do tomorrow. It's, you know, we will have more meetings and get the public's, um, perspective. Uh, you know, we will be making some changes to our code, um, but we, we're, we're more about awareness. And if, please, if people are burning illegally, that means anything that's not yard waste, just call dispatch. It's anonymous, no one's gonna know that you're calling there, and it just gets our attention, cause it could be a problem home. I've had people come in that have, you know, so thank you for getting it out there. Um, I've had people that come in and state, you know, they have everybody on their block that burns garbage. I mean, it's ridiculous, so if we can get that under control. I think that's more the issue, is the illegal burning, you know, burning in burn barrels or what have you, if we can get that under control. The rest of it will just kind of settle down. Counsel?
Earth Day Trail Cleanup is Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from eight-thirty to noon. Um, they're attempting to clean up the entire one hundred and thirty-mile Cedar Valley Trail Network in one day. We have four areas here in Evansdale. So I would like to think that Evansdale citizens could clean up their own portion of that trail. Um, anybody that would like to volunteer to help on that day, if you would get ahold of me, why I can assign you a, an area. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Basically from Lafayette down to the bridge, the trailhead there, and around Myers Lake.
And, um, Lafayette will go out for bid in August. The project will be started this year.
Yay.
So. It's a long journey. Any more from counsel? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.